To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. And a special welcome to the students from the high school. If you have any questions at the end of the meeting, I'll be happy to answer your questions. Don't be shy.
Don't be shy, Jesse.
All right. We don't have any agenda changes, council, so we need approval of the minutes for last January's meeting, the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Any revisions or corrections?
No. I approve that we approve them.
That's seconded.
I move that seconded that the minutes be approved from the last January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five council meeting, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that vote aye, and the ayes have it in the council. All right, the first item on the agenda is the public hearing on the surplus sale of land, and it's going to be a little bit lengthy. We've never done a sale of land, so we're going to make sure that everybody understands why and how we're doing this. So it is seven oh-two. And I call the public hearing to order an open for the sale and disposal of city land. This property was originally acquired for public utility purposes before selling, leasing, or conveying surplus property originally acquired for public utility purposes. Cities must follow the requirements of RCW thirty-five dot ninety-four dot zero four zero, including a public hearing. This statute applies to all real property regardless of value except for portable housing. Property transfers under RCW thirty-nine dot thirty-three dot zero one five. All personal property with an estimated market value of more than fifty thousand dollars, personal property with an estimated value of fifty thousand or less is exempt from these requirements, and no hearing is required by state law, although local policies may still require a hearing. So following the public hearing, the city council must adopt a resolution declaring that the property is surplus to the city's needs and is not required for providing continued public utility service. The resolution must state the fair market value and any other terms and conditions for the disposition that the city council deems to be in public interest. Under intergovernmental property transfers, which this will be, chapter thirty-nine dot thirty-three in the RCW governs, the intergovernmental disposition of property, in particular RCW thirty-nine dot thirty-three dot zero one zero, allows any municipality or political subdivision to sell, transfer, exchange, lease, or otherwise dispose of real or personal property to other governmental entities, which includes any other municipality or political subdivision, any federally recognized Indian tribe, or the state or federal government. Such terms and conditions may be mutually agreeable upon, but that includes, which permits the transfer of property for less than its fair market value. Public testimony comments will follow the reading of the city land sale, and the city council has determined that the real property of block four, tract B, exhibit A, located in Clarkston, Washington, tax parcel number six dash one three two dash zero four dash zero one twelve is not currently needed by the city, nor will be needed in the future, and that the city will receive the full value of the property from the sale. However, RCW forty-three dot zero nine dot two ten requires that local governments receive the true and full value of the property for all property transferred to another government entity. The state attorney general's office has concluded that this statute can be harmonized with RCW thirty-nine dot thirty-three dot zero one zero if the government agencies negotiate over the property's value that depending on the nature of the property and the circumstances of the transaction, full value can have a flexible meaning and could include non-monetary considerations. If the estimated value of the property being transferred to another government entity is more than fifty thousand dollars, the city must hold a properly known as public hearing prior to disposing of the property, and that's under RCW thirty-nine dot thirty-three dot zero two zero. The city is thereby authorized to sell and dispose of the surplus property by direct intergovernmental sale to the Assotum County Utility District for the mutually agreed about upon full value of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So basically, that's what we have to do, and that's what we're here to do right now. So we are ready for public comments. Remember, the public comments must relate to the sale of this land. The speakers from the public will have a three-minute time limit, as always, and please state your name and address before you begin.
For clarification, is this just for the land, and we have public comment later for other things? Okay.
All right. So we are ready for public comments from the public. And let's see. Let's hear some people that have signed up to speak, and Jesse Shorey is first, please.
This isn't about the land, it's about other stuff.
Pardon me?
So this isn't about the land sale, this is about other stuff?
No, this is only for a hearing for...
The land sale.
There will be public comment after we go.
Yeah. This is only about the public hearing. So is there anybody that wants to speak to the public hearing we're having on the land sale? Okay, if not, then the comments are now closed for the public hearing, and the time is seven oh-eight. And we are back in regular session. Okay, now we are ready for communications from the public. And Jesse Shorey. Your minutes are ticking.
What?
I'm not speaking.
Thank you. All right. Wait, he does have privacy.
Hi, this is Jesse. This is my ch... Hi, I'm Jesse, and you already know my address because I had to write it down in order to speak tonight. I am here to address the new guidelines for public comments. They're conflicts with RCW forty-two point three zero point two four zero and the public's constitutional right under the First Amendment. The guidelines state that public comments is at the discretion of the city council. However, RCWs require public comments at every meeting where final action is taken. Public intent, public input cannot be optional. By making public comment discretionary, the guideline directly violates state law. Being required to sign up is not prohibited under RCWs, provided it does not create unreasonable barriers to participation. However, for those that discovered they wanted to speak, as things come up, I recommend leaving the signup paper right here on the podium to be signed at the time of speaking if it is truly about record-keeping. While limiting individual speakers to three minutes is reasonable, creating an arbitrary time limit of fifteen-minute cap for the entire public comment period is not. RCWs require reasonable opportunities for public input. Capping total time in this way would and could prevent many residents from participating, especially during future high-interest meetings, which undermines the public's right to meaningful participation. The guidelines prohibit comments on matters scheduling for public hearings later in the meeting. RCWs do not allow councils to limit public comment to exclude specific topics. Preventing individuals from addressing critical issues early in the meeting, particularly when they may not be able to stay for the entire hearing, is an illegal restriction. These limits on public, the public's ability to engage fully and meaningfully in local governance. The guidelines do not address how public comments will be made accessible to individuals who cannot attend in person as required by RCWs. The law mandates that public bodies provide the remote option for commenting when feasible, especially for individuals with disabilities and other barriers of attendance. Failure to include these accommodations would leave the council out of compliance. The guidelines also prohibit disorderly speech and give the presiding officer broad discretion to bar individuals for disrupting the meeting. While maintaining order is important, the rules risk being misused to silence criticism of public officials or council policies. Under the First Amendment, the public has the right to criticize their government officials, even if the comments are uncomfortable or harsh and include name-calling. Restricting speech labeled as disorderly must not be used to silence opposing viewpoints. Genuine disruption such as shouting, threatening, and preventing others from speaking can legally be barred. Misusing this rule would violate constitutional protections and open the council to legal challenges. These guidelines, as written, violate Washington Code and make public commentary discretionary, public comment discretionary, imposing a fixed time limit and failing to provide accommodations for remote participation. Additionally, the broad discretion granted to silent speakers risks infringement on the public's First Amendment rights. I urge the council to revise these guidelines and to assure compliance with state law and to respect public's right for meaningful participation in government. And if you look in front of you, you'll see my challenge to you all to review these and make the appropriate adjustments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have four speakers and Melissa Andrews. Melissa Andrews? Please state your name and address.
Melissa Andrews, twenty-thirty-second Avenue. I just had a few questions. I don't have any RCWs or anything on this, where it says you have to limit speech to certain topics or agenda items. Several people, of course, even when I was on the other side on the council, would come and bring things to the attention of the council that were not on the agenda. So I think that's, I mean, that's neither here nor there. And I understand keeping things orderly and protecting all of you on that side, but I remember sitting on that side, and one of the most important things of my job was being able to listen to the public when they commented. Not interrupting, not shushing, not pushing away. If somebody was respectful and you disagreed with them, so you disagree with them, but it's only fair to hear them. There were things that I agreed with, things I disagreed with, but I could never find myself telling someone to be quiet or not to speak, and I just kind of feel that putting this in place is making the public feel like they don't have the right to speak. And I'm sure there were probably reasons for putting this in place, but it just, it kind of limits your job up there because your job is to hear from those of us back here. I think that's one of the most important parts of being an elected official, is hearing who voted you in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Judy Fuller.
Good evening, everyone.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Judy Fuller, and my address is outside on the signup sheet. I too am here to discuss the new guidelines for your public comment. Under statute WCW forty-thirty zero two two four, section three, has a major flaw. So to better explain what this flaw is, I'm curious, how does this agency get to decide when a public comment must be in the form of a written comment? Because by definition, the word "public" means open, being in the service of the community, and direct to the people in general of communities. So now that you have a clear definition of the word "public," we can all plainly see that a written comment subjected, excuse me, submitted to the agency is not public at all. Well, not unless you plan to post your written comments on your official website for the entire community to read. That could be a compromise. Number seven in your guidelines has a serious flaw as well, and that's your terminology. Terminology disorderly speech is very problematic because what the agency may view as disorderly may not be considered turbulent speech by the general public. So even the ACLU website, which I really, I encourage everyone to actually go there and do some reading, states that a government bodies, no government body, cannot legally exclude people from disruption simply because the person uses obscenities in connection to political speech. And I have heard people be shut down because they may say the word "damn" or something along those lines, and that's actually unlawful. Some of the turn out, some, the other terminology in the statute may cause some tug-of-wars. This terminology certainly aims to suppress the freedom of speech, and without the freedom of speech, we are not a free people. So any policy which attempts to suppress critical speech may be considered an unconstitutional content-based restriction, and this will get you in trouble. So the words "final action," those are really interesting two words that got added to this statute in twenty-twenty-two. It allows any government agency to control public comments. This sure sounds like a big convenience for government agencies, if you ask me. Critical thinking says that in order to even have these guidelines, that commands that knowing can impede on orderly conduct at your city council meetings, there first needs to be a description on what orderly conduct even includes. Does this even exist? Is there a statute that explains how people are to act orderly in public meetings? Because I haven't found one to date. Lastly, the terminology viewpoint neutral, that's also a very, very kind of a dangerous terminology there, because it's caused many problems and many lawsuits already. The ACLU warns that limiting public speakers to remain viewpoint neutral just very well may be unconstitutional, the reason being that only the narrative of you, the agency, is being represented. I've had your job, I've sat in your seat, and your job is challenging and stressful, but if you perform your positions as truth-seekers and truth-tellers, and you study your statutes, and if you serve the people who voted for you and uphold your oath, you will actually enjoy your jobs with more smiles instead of looking down and almost ashamed and like you don't want to be here. So thank you for your time. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, council, from the mayor. I want to ask you if you... How do you feel about moving the time of the council meeting?
To what time?
To, say, five-thirty or six. I would support that.
Yes.
If you want to think about it, you know, we can talk about it. It might be more convenient for some people. It gets darker, so I don't know if that would be more convenient or less convenient, but it's something to think about. We can talk about it, you know, another time at the next council meeting, or if you have some thoughts, you can email me. Also, I'd like to see if we can have some, just a few informal council work sessions. I'd like to hear your suggestions regarding the future of the city, and I'd like to have your input on ideas, and, you know, anything that you think we should do differently, or... So I'd like to have a few meetings, which of course will be open to the public. We'll just have to set a special council meeting and take you on some things that you want to change. Sometimes it's good to just have a general meeting that we can talk freely, and, you know, if there are any changes that we think need to be made, we can do so. All right? So keep that in mind, and maybe we'll talk a little more at the next council meeting. Thank you. All right, anything from staff or employees? All right, we are ready for committee reports, then, and I have to add, may the audit report on the current bills, please.
The total expenditures for the February tenth period of five hundred, five thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents.
Ed, you can't even pay the bills?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded that the bills be paid. Any questions, council? Now, let's vote. All those in favor of paying the bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that vote aye, and the ayes have it, thank you. We have all the committee reports around public safety and public works and any outside organizations in your package, and we have no unfinished business, so we are ready for the consent agenda. And you can motion to approve the consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that consent agenda be approved. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that vote aye, and the ayes have it, thank you. We have no new business. We're ready for council comment.
I, oh, Ms. Fuller?
Yeah.
What was the statute that you listed? I was trying to write that down.
It's actually on your sheet down here. It's on your guideline sheet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's actually two different, one linked the other. It's right out here.
Yeah, okay, okay. I think I just heard you wrong in here.
Yeah, it's on some cabinet.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Yes.
Sorry, one last thing. I just want to say, thank you very much. Wow, you said a very, very, very well spoken, and I appreciate it.
I'm sad when you think that helps. You guys look a little happier. You look like you just hate being up there. I love being up there.
I, oh, I know. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I think about a year or so ago, I think everyone enjoyed listening to me speak.
Yeah, you guys could do some karaoke.
Yeah. My favorite part of the day, and this other thing, is just listening to the public speak, whether it's good, bad, ugly, or just fantastic. It is my favorite part, is my favorite part, just listening to the public. If I look tired, it's because I'm ragged all day with four kids and wrestling practice and so on and so forth.
I have over an hour for those three minutes.
So, but this is, but this is my favorite. I love listening to the public speak.
All right, take care.
Yeah, good night, Ms. Fuller. And Jesse, that was a lot of words.
Dude, I'm sorry, I ran out of time. I opened up the wrong one at first.
That was a lot of words.
So I had to catch up.
And that's all I have to say.
It's recorded, so everybody can listen to it again if they'd like.
By the way, Melissa Fuller is from Julia, so travel the ways to get here.
All right. Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention is that I do not believe that any restrictions on sharing opposing viewpoints is the intent of any policy that's set forth before council. I think it's extremely important, as our speakers have stated today, that we actually hear about opposing viewpoints. That's the point of public comment. So just to make that clear, at least from my opinion, and we have our city attorney here who can also speak on that a little more eloquently, I think that is definitely something we want to make sure everybody understands that that is, that's the point. So thanks for, we need that clarification to make sure people aren't confused and feeling intimidated or like they're going to be, you know, shut down, so.
So what happens when somebody decides later on that they want to speak and they're not signed in? How does that work? Do they have to request?
Well, you know the protocol right now, right? So there's, it's on the table, and...
So the...
I don't think there's a problem with, you know, if you're going to pick up, if you're coming to a council meeting, usually pick up the agenda, and it's right there next to the agenda. Anybody else from council?
That's limiting what we talk about to the agenda.
So they sign in?
You can't limit us.
And just for meeting first, okay.
And that's not constitutional.
But what Melissa is asking is if somebody during the council meeting has a thought and they want to get up and speak, or they have gained some courage, and now they want to step up and speak, well, that could be an opportunity. That's what I'm hearing you asking.
Yes, yes.
That's why I mentioned just leaving the paper on the podium.
So we, the agenda is, you know, we do have a specific time for anybody in the audience to speak, and we try to stick to the agenda. Otherwise, we could have chaos, so, you know, it's a good idea to stick to the agenda.
But requiring the signup is not constitutional, is not right. You cannot require a signup to speak. If you leave the signup on the podium and allow somebody to walk up and put their name on it, that satisfies your requirement for record-keeping.
Well, we, you know, we had some people that were reluctant to say their address out loud, so I thought this would be a better and easier way to, for some people to do it, so. All right, council?
Is it, is it unconstitutional to limit to three minutes? Okay, because if we didn't limit it, we'd be here all night sometimes.
Sure, that goes into the total time. The fifteen-minute cap is actually what's in question for that.
Okay, this is the time for you to speak, Jesse, is the time for council to give us their views or if they have some comment. Thank you.
I was just curious about that, because, you know, we try to make these as organized as possible and not be here all night, but yet we want everybody to express themselves.
Reasonable accommodations in the event that there was a very big topic.
Jesse, it is now your turn to speak. It is the council's turn to speak. Please do not refrain from speaking. You had your, you had your three minutes. We are following protocol here.
That's all I have.
Anybody else from council want to make a comment? Okay. All righty, we have no new business, so, nobody from press here. All right, we have no executive session. There being no further business to come for the council, I say we are adjourned.
Next time you say in the press thing, "We're press."
You're screwed. You're not allowed.
Thank you. Exactly, that's what we're trying to say.
This is definitely an issue.
It's a good, it's...
That's going to be addressed. This is a pathetic attempt at fricking restricting freedom of speech.
Exactly. And it was the mayor that called it.
You didn't start speaking yet.
Yeah. Do these council meetings get uploaded to YouTube?
We're the only ones.
We're the only ones to do it, yeah, there will be.
Oh, you guys?
Yeah, just so if you look up Walk This Way Media, you'll find it.
Yeah, I have looked up.
Okay.
But it's for your business primarily, not...
No, we do it for this, for the benefit of others.
Yeah.
We go to Juliette, too, we do theirs.
Oh, you do? Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you go to Walk This Way Media, and then on the one page, you'll see our YouTube page, that's where we usually put the council meetings, is on YouTube.
So you think you're just doing it on your own, it's not a city?
Well, we're, we're kind of considered press. That's why when they said, "No, nobody here from the press."
I know, I'm ready to stand up and start talking again.
You'll get shut down, Jesse, you're not allowed to talk.
I actually haven't found a press lawyer. I actually haven't found any credentials.
We have credentials, we're press, yeah. Walk This Way Media, you can see all our content.
Until I find those.
Yeah, we could just, all you have to do is declare that you're press and you're press, technically.
Then I'll stand my ground, but I haven't...
But we also have backup, the show's all our stuff.
They actually have a spot for press to talk. I mean, I wonder if they have a...
Yeah, they have it actually.
Yeah, they do, they, usually the Tribune's here. The Tribune lady's here, but she's not here, so they just assume there's no press.
But I've never seen in a city council being...
Where they allow it.
Would they allow it?
An agenda item that allows it, yeah, which is pretty interesting.
So that's, I don't want to step on that and then kill that, but I think this is all because I called out...
Well, if you look at, if you watch last city council meeting, he called out one of the council members.
I understand when he did.
She took my whole damn criminal record and sent it to a bunch of nonprofits and tried to get them scared and need to work with me and said I was a dangerous man. Right?
Exactly. Well, because we called out, we called out, we called out one of her friends, so she didn't like it, so it was retaliation.
Yeah. Well, her friends, yeah, she molested some children, and she worked at GPH, and she's out.
Yes, and we're like, "That's not okay."
So I said something about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't hear the beginning of your public comments at that minute, too late.
Yeah.
Wow, there's something serious going on.
Yeah, I know.
There's a bad story.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Always is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
See you later.
Kind of say, hey, Sarah, I need those forms.
Yeah, you can, right, and you're in front of her. Her aura makes me guilty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll walk home here in a minute.
I'll ask her.
All right.